Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular Lighthouse Point City Commission meeting for April 24th, 2018. We'll begin with an invocation from Rabbi Decter with Shabbat of North Brower Beaches. Rabbi Decter?
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the city council of our great city of Lighthouse Point. We beseech you, almighty and merciful God, to extend your grace to each and every member of this august body and bestow upon them the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city. Grant these public servants wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. May they have wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform the hard challenges that we face today into the seeds from which we'll sprout forth the growth of tomorrow. May our city continue to serve as a beacon of light for all people of all faiths and walks of life. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. We'll call the meeting to order. Begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
You have a roll call, please.
Mayor Trost.
Here.
Commission President Joffe.
Here.
Commission Vice President Mocker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Van Bussen.
Commissioner Van Bussen here.
City Attorney Cirillo.
Here.
City Administrator Lewitsky.
Here.
Director DiCapolo.
Here.
Fire Chief Gil Martin.
Here.
Library Director Keys.
Here.
Police Chief Licata.
Here.
Public Works Director Stram.
Here.
Recreation Director Leasing.
All accounts.
Thank you. As is customary, the first item on our agenda is approval for the minutes, the regular meeting of April 10th, 2018, commissioners.
I would offer a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed with 5-0. Next item is our Treasuries Report, Finance Director DiCapolo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
General Fund has $2,724,625.63. Cleanup deposits $33,600 and no cents. Garbage and Trash Fund $1,552,934.23. Special Purpose Funds $2,859,58.84. Stormwater Utility Fund $539,547.95. Debt Service Fund $200,573.81. Contingency $5,483,748.0 cents. General Fund Incumbrances $275,349.13. Sole All Funds $13,669,437.59.
Commissioners, any questions?
I do. The DNJ Transportation, is that for the upcoming summer camp?
Yes.
Is that for the full summer or is that just a partial down payment to hold it?
He can answer that.
That's also included in some second buses that will need to accommodate all of this.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, anything else? I had a quick question, Frank. The contingency deduction by $476,000, what was that for?
Well, it's basically the result of the fiscal year 2016, 2017 operations. So, I mean, I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we get into this education.
Okay. There's nothing else? Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Okay.
Now, we've come to the time on our agenda where we have public comments and requests regarding agenda items. There's one agenda item, it's regarding our yearly audit. So, if you have something to address the commission on our yearly audit, you can come up and speak now. It'll be a time at the end of the meeting where you can come up and talk about anything you'd like to talk about. So, we'll open public comment regarding, there's one item on our agenda, which is our audit. If you'd like to come up, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close that. Reports from city administration, Mayor Trost has a report for the commission.
Commissioners, as you know, we've been working on issues related to a potential bond issue for a variety of projects around the city. I'd like to ask your permission to schedule a workshop at 5:05 PM on May 8th, so that would be immediately preceding our next commission meeting, to discuss where we are, review some new plans. In addition to that, I'd like a flexible date approved in case that we come up with something that we can discuss prior to that date, subject to the normal notice requirements, that we could schedule a date prior to May to discuss anything that may come up that we would need. I'm trying to move this along so we don't lose momentum. We've gained a lot of good momentum on this project, but Merrill's going to be working out some plans with the department heads over the next week. She's meeting with all of them on Thursday, I believe it is, John?
Yes, sir.
And as a result of that, we may have some things sooner than May 8th, and if we do, I'd like to have permission to have a flex date in there. So, with your approval, we'll schedule 5:05 on the 8th and have a flex date in between if necessary.
That works for me. So, you want to go with that?
Yeah, I just, once a year, I'm out of town from the 1st and 4th.
Okay.
Previously, some mic. I'm just looking at dates that might be better.
I have no issue with the date or time.
Well, Kyle, I'll check with you on your work schedule before we schedule anything, too.
I have a number of commitments, but I will work around them and make myself available.
Okay.
What could be talking about an evening meeting?
Well, it'll depend on how everyone works out. We may do a morning meeting, we may do an afternoon, it'll just have to depend on everybody's schedule. But I'll endeavor to do it. So, you're out May 1st through 4th?
Yeah.
Inclusive or?
No, out of town, New York.
Okay. So, not even the morning?
The 8th is fine.
Okay, the 8th is fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine, just a flex date.
Okay.
I'm pretty, I should be pretty good. Did you say the flex date before May 8th?
It would be a flex date before May 8th, because if we don't do anything before May 8th, we'll schedule the next workshop at May.
Okay, because I can't come on a Thursday, the Thursday morning, the 3rd or the 10th, if it's a morning meeting.
So, Sandy?
It's the 3rd.
All right, three. That's morning only, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. We have no department reports, we have no reports from the city attorney. Our next meetings are planning and zoning, May 1st, 2018. Code enforcement is May 15th, 2018. Community appearance, May 17th, 2018. Special magistrate, May 2nd, 2018. And Marine Advisory's next meeting is August 2nd, 2018. There is no unfinished business in one item of new business, which is the presentation and consideration of our annual financial audit, prepared by Keith McCullough and Finance Director DiCapolo will walk us through fiscal year 2017.
Thank you. And so, Mayor and all commissioners, thank you for allowing me to present this report tonight. We do this once a year and really gives us kind of a good idea of where we're at, kind of how things went in the prior year, and a little bit of an indication of where we're We prepare two documents every year, first being the annual budget. Obviously, we do that, we actually started the process for that already, and we're going to be having some meetings coming up over the next few months to prepare for that. We adopt that on October 1st and fiscal year ends on September 30th. It's the annual financial revenues expenditures for the five of the city's operating funds. We did receive a distinct budget presentation worth in the GFOA for the second time in a row for fiscal year 2016, '17, and we submitted for the current budget year, hopefully we'll get it again. We're here to talk about the caper tonight, that's the comprehensive annual financial report, and this is just a detailed financial report about the city. There's both narrative and financial statements, as well as some statistical information about the city. And we prepare, we work, governments and in the financial realm of things, we work underneath several different overarching agencies, one being the Control of the General of the United States, they issue governmental auditing standards that apply to all those governments. Court of Statutes specify who should be audited, timing and issuance of audit. They also allow us to tax our residents and property owners and provide for special assessments and standards for the use of public funds, deposits, and investments. The Auditor General's Office of the State of Florida is appointed by the state legislature to audit state agencies, universities, and colleges. They also review all local government annual financial reports and audit us at any time if they feel the need. We are required to notify them if we feel that we meet conditions that indicate that we're in a state of financial emergency, and our auditors are also required to notify them if they see deteriorating financial conditions within the city, which they don't currently. The Government Accounting Standards Board issues accounting pronouncements and they provide a framework for financial accounting and reporting. They're a sister organization to the FASB, which is the Financial Accounting Standards Board. They oversee, you know, public trading companies and the other side of the business world, and GASB is over governmental entities like the City of Lighthouse Point. And finally, we have the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, it's a professional organization, provide guidance and technical assistance to local governments, professional development, resources, and at the national, state, and local levels. They oversee the caper award program, so they're, they put the criteria out that dictate how we prepare this report every year. It allows governments to report all the same information in a consistent manner, so you can easily compare between different types of governments, you find the same information in the same places, it just makes everything easier to understand when you're looking at different governments. Our independent auditors, Keith McCullough and company, they perform an audit on what we call a test basis, so they don't look at every single transaction, they're only looking at segments of transactions, and they, as long as they get reasonable assurance that the statements are free of material, the statements are more good, if they do their testing and they find issues, then they start to do deeper and deeper, and they do more testing and more testing, and, you know, and the idea is that they may find something. But they do a lot of testing ahead of time, they come out before the audit, they do preliminary field work, they do risk assessment, they just get a sense of what's going on in the city and presenting what they need to really consider, and then they come back and do their auditing in the fall after fiscal year has ended. They've issued an unqualified opinion that the city's fiscal year 16, '17 caper fairly presents a financial position of the city and complies with applicable reporting standards. So, that's a good thing, that's a thumbs up. Two reports that are worth discussing tonight that they issue in the caper, one being the internal control over financial reporting and on compliance with government auditing standards. What it says is, number one, no deficiencies or considered immaterial weaknesses, and number two, no instances of non-compliance of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. So, again, it's just another, you know, we're good, thumbs up. The reports management confirms city compliance with court statutes regarding investment of public funds, which is a pretty significant one, and there are no violations of contracts or grant agreements, and no evidence of a financial emergency currently exists within the city. The caper is structured with four different sections, and the presentations run slow tonight, we tested it earlier and found that it was a little lagging, but eventually it'll come through, there we go. So, there are four different sections. One is the Management Discussion Analysis, that's an evaluation of the city's finances. It's a narrative format, it gives kind of an overview of the fiscal year. Basic financial statements, we have government-wide, and we have fund financials. The government-wise, they're looking at the city like a business, they're looking at it full accrual accounting, is what they call it, and essentially, we look at all known things due to government and all known things that the government has to pay out. So, it doesn't consider, you know, only within 30 days or six months or within 12 months even, it really looks at kind of everything that's out there. The fund financials report as, you know, general fund, garbage and trash fund, it really separates everything out on a fund level, and it looks at really only what's currently owed by the city and what current resources we have to pay those bills by. So, that's really a more, it's called modified accrual, but it really just focuses on our current ability to pay bills with current assets. It only looks at what's in 30 days of the fiscal year end. After that, you have notes of financial statements, which is really just more detailed explanations and schedules that are, you know, summarizing and getting into more detail of the basic financials. And then finally, we have the fiscal section, which is demographic information about the city. That is actually probably the most interesting part of the report, I will say, for most of the people at home. So, we did receive the caper award for FY '16, we will, we have applied for FY '17, and I'm assuming that we're going to receive it again. We didn't have any other comments at all after the last one, so we should be good to go. Okay, so I'm going to get into, first, starting with government-wide financial statements, and that's net position, is what it's called, statement of net position. And it's really like a balance sheet, like you would find in government or in a business. And for the fiscal year, we had a decrease in overall net position. So, we have, we have a total net position of $29,392,040. So, it went down by $152,000. So, for all intents and purposes, the government really is in the same position it was the year earlier. It was a very small decline, I'm going to get into the reason why that occurred. We have net position broken up into three different components. One is the net investment in capital assets. So, on this financial statement, we actually report on all of our city assets. We report on, you know, this podium, if it's worth enough money, and this desk that you're sitting at, any computers that we have, and all the vehicles we have. We include all those assets, depreciation, all that stuff goes on in the report. So, we look at the net investment in capital assets, which is basically when we take our value of all of our assets, less depreciation, less any debt we issue to pay for those assets, and the residual amount is what's called net investment in capital assets. Another component of net position is restricted net assets or net position. And what that is, is anything that has a legal restriction on it, any balances, so like anything that is a special assessment fund, like the stormwater fund, the garbage fund, those are restricted. And then anything that's left over just falls into unrestricted net position, that's just kind of the residual balance after everything else has already been accounted for.
Frank, is the infrastructure fund restricted, considered restricted?
It is not.
It is not, I think so, okay. It's got to be, it's got to be, the stormwater is because we levy an assessment, and those monies need to be kept separate because of that, right?
Yeah, that's, the legal restriction is the legal process by which we levy those funds. So, we had an overall increase in restricted net position, and what that stems from is a combination of the following balances, loans. Stormwater fund had an increase of $152,000 total balance, and what that was, was we didn't have a whole lot of capital activity in that fund this year, we collect around $260,000 to $270,000 in assessment revenues, so we spent about $110,000 on repairs, some projects. So, there is an increase to our public safety fund, which primarily consists of our federal forfeitures, those are also considered legally restricted because of the federal requirements on how we spend that money, but we can't just take it and buy a playground with it, unfortunately. So, that's legally restricted, that's in that segment of net position. So, they've spent $156,000, the reason being we have recurring expenditures, capital expenditures, and there's no revenue coming into that fund except for some interest. Walter Mary Barker Library Trust Fund, the portion of, the portion of the, that we can spend is considered restricted net position. That is the $57,000. So, we made around $70,000 and change, and we spent some last, this past year, as was allowed by the city commission, so there was an increase of about $58,000. Debt Service Fund, that's also legally restricted because we levy a voted debt millage, that's where those funds come from, and there we spend around $3,800. There's currently about $10,000 in that fund this year, so that money can be used to offset future special, sorry, future act of alarm levies.
Why is that number so, I would think if we're, wouldn't the debt service fund be basically where the interest payments come out of?
Yes, we pay for our, the note payable that was from the initial GO bond issued back in 2002, that, that's all the activity to pay that debt is accounted for in the debt service fund. We make two payments a year, and we know exactly how much it is, so what we do is we try to levy exactly how much we need to make those payments. Sometimes we end up with additional funds because there are delinquent taxes that are collected that we get, that we didn't account for, and then sometimes we go a little bit short to try and use some of that fund out. So, it just kind of, it's kind of ebbs and flows, but, but, so we just try and be as precise as possible as to not overtax people for what we, we know exactly how much we need to pay.
What was the interest payment? Do you know what the interest payment on that debt was for fiscal 2016, 2017?
I mean, I can pull that for you.
I can get it later.
Our total payment is $407,000 a year.
Okay. Simple interest, okay.
And Garbage and Trash Fund now is reported in restricted because we started levying a special assessment for that. So, the auditors, we discussed how we'd report that, and anything that we generated as a surplus in the prior year, once we started the assessment going forward, would be considered restricted. Anything we had before that is unrestricted. So, just keep that in mind, we have a balance of around $600,000 in that fund, so there are funds available to use towards some programs in the city related to the garbage and trash function. So, that's it for restricted. Unrestricted net position, like I said, is the residual balance left over, and this is the breakdown of those three components, the basic, at the top there, the net investment in capital assets is around $19 million. Like I said, that's our total value of assets, less depreciation, less the debt we issue to pay for those assets, and then you have restricted is around $3 million, and unrestricted is around $7.5 million. So, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, so it's, it's always hard to pinpoint exactly what one thing or things caused the fluctuation. I'm going to get in more into on the fund level and talk about some of the fluctuations in the funds and how, and really how it all ties together, especially with the contingency. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
Each year, the auditors send the commissioners, and I assume others in the city staff, to fill out a survey, wanting to know, you know, if we're aware of anything, but do you get copies of those?
No.
And where are they, if they're not really noted in the book, other than there were no irregularities or anything like that? So, they just look at those and then make an assessment based on the returns that they get?
Yes. If anything seems that they need to follow up on, it's, it's just sort of just asking anyone if they're aware of anything, like you said, that they know of?
Just protocol.
Just protocol. And if they see something that looks strange or worth consideration, then they'll follow up on it. But we, we send them out, but they, they get mailed back to them, and we don't see them and we don't really care about anything, actually.
Okay. Just curious, do they ever want to?
Okay, so, getting to the fund level, general fund contingency. So, that's, the contingency is a calculation where we take the general fund, total fund balance, we subtract out anything that's non-spendable, anything that's encumbered, you know, open POs at year end, and any amounts that are appropriated in the next year budget, so like if we're using money to fund the budget for next year, if we don't have a balanced budget, that gets put into the, or subtracted from contingency. So, the non-spendable is prepaid expenses, so we have insurance payments that we make before year end for the following year, and so we can't expense that in the prior year because it's going to benefit the following year, so we consider that to be a prepaid expense. That's non-spendable fund balance. The other thing is, I'm sorry, that's general fund contingency, taken from it. The other thing is, the Barker Trust, oh, that, I'm sorry, that's a different one. So, actually, in the general fund, it's really just going to be our prepaid expenses and any encumbrances and any amounts appropriated for next fiscal year. So, the, the balance has gone from 5.2 million, it went up to 5.4 million in 2015, it went up to 5.9, almost 6 million prior year, and then it came back down to 5.5 million, so we had a decrease of $476,000. Really, what we can, to simplify the, really the situation from the past year, was number one, we had approximately 203,000 additional encumbrances outstanding at year end. We typically have between 40 and 60,000, we had over 200,000. We issued a PO for the new camera system for the citywide cameras, and that was a $185,000 purchase order outstanding at year end. So, that lowers contingency in the prior year because we've, we've encumbered those funds, it's no longer free money just sitting there. Another thing was the hurricane, as you're aware, we had about a little over $300,000 of vendor invoices and city overtime that we spent, real, you know, incurred costs, hard costs for the hurricane that were put out before year end. So, a good portion of that money will be coming back to us, we are in the process of seeking the reimbursement. I'm actually meeting with FEMA on Thursday, they're coming in, we're still going through paperwork, and, you know, we're working to get back as much as we're entitled to, under the law. So, between those two items, the extra around 200,000 in encumbrances, more than usual, and around 300,000 for Irma, that's about your $500,000 number. And that, that is, not only is that present in contingency, but also in the change in total general fund fund balance, because the general fund fund balance is a little bit of a different calculation, but they really, the fluctuations are going to be the same between the contingency and the total fund balance.
Right, so, all right, so I get the, I get the hurricane part, that's just money we had thrown, we get it back, presumably, or go back, we'll talk about that when it comes, but presumably it goes back into contingency. But with like the $180,000 purchase order, when we actually pay for that, when, if we pay for it using next fiscal year monies, will, will that fall off the debt to the general, to the income of the contingency, and that number will go back up 180?
Well, the way, yeah, well, what happens is, we issued the PO, so now the funds are encumbered.
Right.
So, that's why it's not included in contingency, because we were basically segregating those funds. We paid the bill this year, which we actually just paid a week or two ago, and then we're submitting that invoice to, we have money sitting in escrow from when we finance the purchases.
Okay.
That money will come back to the city, and we're made whole again. So, it'll come back, it's, it's more like just, we issued the PO, but we can't count that money because we, we don't have that money.
So, yes, the number's going to go back, this number's going to go back up?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah, and that's separate from any other fluctuations that occurred during this fiscal year, any other one-time revenues that come in that we weren't accounting for, you know, code violations or other settlements, so, yeah, that's one thing that could, but, but I can't sit here and tell you I'm going to guarantee a $200,000 increase in contingency next year because other things could bring it down.
Got you.
Okay. Okay, infrastructure fund, just wanted to make one comment about that. We also transferred $500,000 from the general fund at the end of FY '17 to the infrastructure fund. So, even had it not been for that transfer, then we would have been even for the year. But as you know, the, the fund was getting low, and the decision was made by the city commission to go ahead and make that transfer as a part of the 1718, sorry, 18, yes, 1718 budget process. So, talking about contingency, we also have a fund balance policy, minimum contingency policy, that is, is a calculation that I perform as per city policy that says we should have 1.4 million sitting in aside for minimum contingency. And as you see, we have five, almost five and a half million set aside. So, we definitely exceed our own policy for minimum, and again, it's not the exact number we should have, it's a minimum amount, so anything less than that, we'd be thinking we're in critical condition.
So, what's the percentage of operating?
It's, it's actually, it's, it's a little complicated, but we, I mean, it's, it's like a multi-step calculation, but what it comes out to right now is about 1.35 million. Then we also have an operating contingency policy that, by the GFOA, which, as their practice says, it should be two months of budgeted operating expenditures, which for us was two and a half million for this year. So, again, by both of those metrics, we far exceed that, so, and we also have money that we keep set aside for hurricane, for bridge replacement in case there's a catastrophe. So, the city is definitely well-capitalized to handle any type of threat. If there was a serious hurricane, they come through worse than Irma, and we definitely have enough cash on hand to get the city by while we're waiting to get reimbursed from FEMA or the state.
More of a banker wants to know what's money.
Correct.
Frank, how are these calculations impacted by such things as when we may have to go to a lawsuit to recover funds that we spent on a bridge that were unexpected and that kind of thing, which are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, do we, are those considered just calculations that you set aside until they're resolved? Do they go against the reserves?
Well, the, so for the, the bridge issue that you asked about, that was taken out of the infrastructure fund. We paid those bills from the infrastructure fund balance. We didn't transfer money over to replenish it, you know, from the general fund, it just came out of the infrastructure fund.
We already had half a million, we just put a half a million in there.
Yeah, so we had money in there, and, and the thing is, we're, we're in the process of trying to recover as much as we can through legal means, and when the money comes back, it'll just come right back into the infrastructure fund.
Okay. Goes right to the infrastructure fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, talking about specific, the breakdown specifically of the fund balance itself, we have GASB 54, that's a, that's a GASB pronouncement that says how we're supposed to break up our fund balance. When I first started in government, you had some classifications, but they were very loose, and everybody liked to assign money for all kinds of different purposes. It was basically our way of saying, you can't spend, and when I say our, I say, between management and city administration would say, you know, we're going to squirrel this money away so no one can spend it. GASB said you can't do that anymore, because you can't just say this money's accounted can't just say this money's accounted for if you really have no commitment to spend that money somewhere. So they created five different classifications: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unreserved. So the non-spendable is what I mentioned a few minutes earlier, like the Barker Trust Fund money, that $500,000 that we can't ever spend. That's the corpus of trust. So that is non-spendable. The prepaid insurance bill that we pay, that's also non-spendable. Something that's restricted would be like we talked about the special revenue funds, or anything else that just has a legal restriction. It could be a balance in the general fund itself, but it includes the balance of Garvin Trash Fund, as Liberty said, with the Stormar Fund and, and the Debt Service Fund. The balance of the Barker Fund that is, we can actually spend anything over 500, is considered to be restricted because there's a legal restriction on how to spend that money. So we can spend it, the 500,000 we can't. We have about 10,825 in the Debt Service Fund, as I mentioned, and we can use some of that to offset the debt millage this coming year. Public Safety Fund, almost 1.8 million, that's also legally restricted. And the balance is, unless we go out and get more federal forfeiture money, that balance is just going to continue to go down. You're, you're not going to see it come up.
Frank, real quick. So you, you say you, for the debt, for the Debt Service Fund, and we can use some balance to offset some of the millage. Since I've been up here, every year, our debt service millage has gone down a little bit, but every little bit just means good. I assume that that was because our payments went down. Is it because our payment went down because there's a little bit of a surplus every year, or is it a combination of both?
The payments are fixed.
The payments, second.
407,000 a year, no matter what.
Okay.
The breakdown of principal and interest does change according to the amortization schedule, but we're always paying.
Like your mortgage.
Yeah, we're always paying 407,000 a year. So as the assessed values continue to increase, we can lower our millage rate to get the same amount of money. And then, like I said, if there's any little additional left over that we didn't account for, the payment, we can throw that into and cushion it a little bit.
Okay.
And I mean, you know, realistically, $11,000 doesn't have a huge impact.
Doesn't, yeah.
It might be like .001 of the millage, but it's something. Okay, Stormar Fund we discussed is also not at our assessment, 345,000 dollar balance. So we did spend a lot a couple of years ago on some very large projects, and the balance started to come back up again. Barker Library Trust also restricted, 78,000 dollars. And the Garvin Trash Fund, we have 221,000 restricted. Committed, that's constrained minimally by the city commission. We have 246,000 encumbrances, I mentioned, you know, it normalizes between 50, 70,000, and it was higher because of that one large PO that we had outstanding at year end. The reason why that's committed is because although we, we issued, it's, it's a commitment to a vendor, saying we're going to procure these services, but we're not legally bound to buy anything at that point, not necessarily. I mean, there's contract law issues, but that's a separate thing. So for all intents and purposes, we just call it committed fund balance. Our minimum fund balance that's required by our city policy is also considered to be committed because that policy can be changed by a city commission and we can calculate it differently. So right now, it's 1.35 million. And any fund balance appropriated for next year, as I mentioned earlier, that's also committed. Any other non-general fund balances except for restricted or negative balances in funds are also considered to be committed. So if it's not a general fund, it's a committed balance. Assigned is constrained at a minimum by the mayor, which is what we include our 2.5 million for disaster, hurricane recovery, and 1.25 million for emergency bridge replacement. So those amounts are segregated in the general fund as assigned fund balance. Holding up on you again. Okay, and then finally, unassigned fund balance is any residual fund balance left over after all those items are subtracted. Across all funds, it's 352,000. For the general fund, it's around 381,000. The reason why the total across all funds is lower than what's in the general fund itself is because the Tenna Center Fund has a negative fund balance of about $11,000, and that gets put into unsigned because you can't assign something that's negative. So therefore, the total across all funds is around 352,000. It's actually $28,000 negative fund balance. Okay, and then this is a breakdown of the total general fund balance, just to illustrate how the numbers play and just so you can see some variability from year to year. The, the first year, in 2014, you can see the committed was higher, 1.5 million. And that was because we had allocated a chunk of money towards next year's budget. We, we had a, we had a shortfall for the next year, so we had to make it up. So we budgeted to spend 238,000 in fund balance. In fiscal year 2015, we actually had a surplus of 12,000 that year. But that's the reason why the committed was high at the end of 2014, because we had set aside a nest of 239,000 to put in next year's budget. And then it went down because we didn't allocate much money towards the budget from year to year after that. But then back in, up to 17, now we're back up to 1.6 million because again, we have that encumbrance that pushed that number up. If without that, we'd still be in the 1.3, 1.4 million range. Okay? Our assigned fund balance, we're holding at 3.75. That's emergency money. And our non-spendable is always about the same. It's just our worthless comp premium that we prepaid next year. It's always the same thing, never changes. Our, as you can see, 2016, we, there was no amount budgeted for use in the 2017 budget, but we actually ended up having a total use of 258,000 dollars in FY17 of fund balance. And that's why our total fund balance went from 6,640,000 to 5,800. Okay? All right, so I'm just going to wrap things up. Does anybody have any questions before I finish off? All right, so just talk a little bit about some bigger picture things and where we're heading. Our taxes, tax values were pretty stable for a couple of years. Okay, so 15, 16, 17, we had around a five and a half, six percent gross value increase. That included new construction with just existing properties, just around a five percent increase. FY17, 18, for the term budget year, it was up almost, you know, 7.6 percent, going up to eight percent, and 6.3 on existing properties. We don't know yet exactly what we're looking at for the coming year. I'm trying to get that information. And as you're aware, we kept the same millage rate, so we're able to get more revenue. If we, we can continue with that same logic, how of just, you know, keeping the increase, letting it hit the bottom line without increasing the millage rate, I don't, again, I don't know where we're going to stand. We're, we're working on the budget right now. We're taking all the requests from the department directors. And I can only hope that we end up with a 7.6 or higher percent increase again. We do have a lot of new construction still going on in the city, so that helps with the overall picture.
Frank, when do you think we're going to get some preliminary numbers from the property appraisers?
Officially, we'll all know about a month from now. I'm going to try.
Do you know any bit of area control?
Possibly. But even, even, even that sometimes, I, I can only have so much leverage, you know? So I'm going to try to get some information as soon as, just even, just even if we can overall feel for the countywide and just how coastal properties are doing, even if I just can't get the number, I'm going to try and find out as soon as possible. It'll only help you with budget planning. So, but we should know in the next two, three weeks at, in the latest. Licenses and permits, if you notice in the, after the revenues were down a little bit in FY17 compared to 16, we did have higher commercial construction permit activity in the prior year. We, we still have strong activity in the building department. They're still very busy. There's still a lot of permits in their office. However, there were just some sort of one-time things for commercial properties that don't come in dirt off and push the numbers up in FY16. But we're still seeing some strong growth and, and I know the building department's very busy over there. Pension, our fiduciary net position, which includes our defined benefit pension as well as all of our ICNA pensions, grew with, you know, 401A and the 457 and all those. Total increase is 6.05 million fiduciary net position. Basically, what that means is our current balance plus any contributions, plus any investment earnings, less any fees and less any distributions. That's our fiduciary net position. So we had a pretty good increase. The market was really good last year, even for people investing pretty conservatively, did pretty well. The defined benefit pension plan, the GAZB 68, it shows, is a calculation of our funding. That's going to be cleared up in a second. The GAZB 68 gives us our funding calculation. The actuary does the numbers. We were at 106 percent a couple of years ago, dropped down to 86 percent from 16, back up to 98 percent this year. One of the big reasons for that is because of the healthy investment earnings. We also were able to start recognizing some of the gains that we haven't been able to in the past because of the way that we do our, our asset valuation. And so we went from having a 3 point, around 3.3 million liability to appearing 7,000 liability. That doesn't mean that we stop paying and we just wait and don't do anything. All it means is that we're currently doing well and we have to continue making all the stride payments that the actuary says we have to make. So they say, you know, you're doing fine now, and if you want to keep it that way, you've got, it's not like you said the mortgage. If we're paying our mortgage, that's fine. It doesn't mean that the mortgage is paid off. We have to always keep paying because it's always accruing. So.
And that's a snapshot, Frank. That's.
It's a snapshot.
That's, that's, that's where we are now, based on what we expect to pay out as of today, basically, based on actuaries, based on crystal ball, a lot of assumptions, a lot of predictions.
A lot of assumptions and a lot of math that nobody in this room understands.
Right.
So, yeah, so, and that doesn't mean that, if that's the case, that we can just drop our contribution rates. All that is, is tied into just keeping the fund healthy. And then we have an OTAP liability. It's something we normally talk about here because we don't provide really significant other post-employment benefits for health insurance. Our health insurance ceases when people hit a Medicare age. And most of our employees aren't eligible for any city subsidies. They're only allowed to just participate in the health plan. But, but we have a liability of 39,000 dollars. But we pay as we go. We don't have many people getting any kind of post-employment benefits. But I just felt necessary to put it in here because it's in the cap and it's something you should be aware of. It's just, it's not a cause for concern at this point.
Frank, we got something in the, in our pack, in our mail packet, so a week or maybe two or two, I was gone for nine days. But it was, I think it was from Keith McCullough, and it talked about pension. It talked, it basically, as I read it, it said, we didn't really, is it, was it, bottom line, they didn't audit the pension balances? They just, what was that document, I guess?
They, they don't, they don't audit the pension itself. They rely on an audit of, from another CPA.
Okay.
That's a company called Shorestein, and Shorestein, that's engaged by the League of Cities to audit our pension. The pension trust fund is one large animal in itself. We are one component of that overall pension trust. So they engage an auditor to audit the entire fund, and then they issue financial statements for each of the individual trustees or, you know, agencies. So, yeah, they, they rely on the other auditor's report. They do review the report, they get a copy of it, and they can basically read it and understand if they have any questions. They can contact the other CPA. It's, it's just their way of gathering understanding. We don't engage and audit that fund. Okay? So that's it. We did, like I said, we applied for the award for this one, and hopefully we'll get it. And I can entertain any questions you have at this time.
Commissioners?
Good job.
Good job again. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. There are, moving on, there are no ordinances, there are no resolutions. Now is the time where we invite the public.
Excuse me one second. We normally do a motion to accept.
Oh, that's all right. Thank you.
Make a motion to exa, uh, accept the annual financial audit for fiscal year ending September 30, 2017.
Second. There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Frank. So again, there are, that was the only item on our agenda, no ordinances, no resolutions. Now is the time for the public to come up and address the commission on any topics you would like. When you come up, please state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to speak. So we'll open public comment.
Hello, my name's Danielle Burns. I live at 4250 Northeast 26 Terrace. And I am a parent of a Norcrest Elementary School third grader. And I am here to talk to the commissioners about bringing a motion to assist with the funding for a dedicated resource officer for Norcrest. Norcrest is unique, obviously. That's our school. We fought as a city to rezone our city so all of our elementary school students would go to this school. And we have no legal obligation to fund a resource officer. Norcrest shares it with two other schools, which in my opinion, if there's not somebody there full-time, there might as well be nobody there because things can happen, obviously, at any time. So I've attended a number of meetings. I've talked to a number of people. Commissioner Joffe, spoken to Commissioner Van Busker, spoken to the cadre director, Mark Narkeer, attended a couple of PTA meetings that were dedicated at Norcrest to the safety issues. One was attended by Mayor Fisher as well from Pompano, who is open to discussions. So that is why I'm here. I would like to have the commission motion to add this as an item formally for discussion. I realize that the county is on a bit of a hold depending on where the money goes from the state and the county. So I understand that that's a consideration, but that is why I'm here. I have a number of family members and fellow Lighthouse Point residents here as well. So.
Good. Thank you. I'll just make a few comments. One, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that, or learned by reading the Pelican, that you guys were coming. Commissioner Joffe was kind enough to tell me after the meeting that meeting occurred. But on such an important topic, Mayor Fisher obviously was invited. Commissioner Joffe obviously was invited. I don't understand why no one would have thought to pick up and call the mayor of Lighthouse Point and ask him if he could attend. And I, I'm very empathetic and I understand what you're saying. And it's, it's a very, very important issue. I'm the first one to say protection of kids is very important. But the fact that this meeting was held and these discussions were had so shortly after the MSD tragedy, and I, I just don't understand why no one thought to reach out to me and let me know about it. So I just have to share that disappointment with you because I, I am very disappointed. And putting that aside, I have reached out to Nora Rupert's office. I've left a couple of messages for her. I did hear back from her office late this afternoon. She apparently has pneumonia, so she can't talk. So she's going to speak to me about this later on in the week, she told me. But also, as you may be aware, the state appropriated over $100 million for this. The county has turned down a very small portion of it, as I understand, but that's probably a good thing. But the rest of it is going to be put aside for school safety. And it is mandated under this law, as I understand it, that the county school board must provide a full-time SRO. Okay? So I understand what you're asking for, but I think it's a little premature. I would like, I would like to monitor this very closely. And if we find the school board is not doing what it needs to, we definitely need to visit this. Okay? But if you have no objection, can we monitor it for the next month or so? Because there's certain things the county has to do.
Very good.
Okay? They have to do a threat assessment at that school. Now, I can tell you, after I read this on Friday, I drove over there. And I understand the concern. It's, it's very valid. I've been to other meetings at this school, and I understand that concern. There is one point of entry, but it's not a secure point of entry. I did, both times I was there, by the way, once on Friday afternoon, and again, yesterday, the SRO did happen to be on campus, so I just must have caught the luck of the draw at both times. But if you could please keep us informed, and I recognize a couple of the other moms over there that can probably do the same thing, and let us know what you're getting from the school. But I am definitely going to be discussing this with Ms. Rupert and others at the school board if necessary because we need to make sure all those children are safe, every single one of them, not just the Lighthouse Point kids, all of them. I did speak to Mayor Fisher today also, and he is also aware of that as well. So is that fair, that you'll keep us informed?
I think that's fair.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Anybody else in the public? Please, come forth. Just remember to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Shelley Campbell. I live at 1920 Northeast 29th Street. I've been a Lighthouse Point resident for 15 years, and we have two children here that do attend Norcrest Elementary. The law that you're referring to only mandates a full-time school resource officer for every 1,000 students. Norcrest has approximately 800 and do not qualify for a, for a full-time officer unless the, what we are hoping for is Pompano, Lighthouse Point to work together to put towards the 75, half of the, half of the 150,000 required to put a full-time school resource officer at Norcrest. It's approximately $150,000 a year in a salary for that officer. And the Broward County School District will put up half of that, if the other.
City?
A city will put up the other 75,000.
You said it's 150,000 a year?
150,000 dollars a year to have a school resource officer dedicated to a school.
Why is it that much money?
I have not been told that.
Seems pretty steep.
It seems to be based on a officer that is maxed out in time, or is nearing retirement.
I, I received a different figure today.
Okay.
I was told 46,000 a year for a part-time. In other words, they work only part of the year. They are there during all school hours, though. That is the figure I heard today. So.
The information I got was from the last school safety meeting from Lieutenant Hedlund, who is.
He was basing, he was basing it on a full-time tenured officer.
Right.
Right. This is, the, the, the figures that I'm getting are from people that are working for nine months out of the year. Typically, they take the summers off, like the teachers do. And they are only there from a half an hour before school until a half an hour after school. That's, that's what I got.
Okay.
So there, I think the figure needs to be vetted a lot more, and I, I, or what you're saying, I'm shocked by the $150,000.
I was too. But unfortunately, the money that has been granted to the cities, it's still not enough that's needed for school resource officers. So I'm just asking that you consider working with the commission to maybe put up half of the money needed, so that we can get a full-time officer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I say something?
Well, we have another resident. Can you wait till, till the resident finishes?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Kang. My address is 3160 Northeast 27th Avenue. And I'm also a resident of Lighthouse Point since 2004. And we also have a son who's at Norcrest, a first-year-old, I mean, a first grader. And so I'm just here just for, you know, what Danielle Burns has brought forward to the commission. And I'm glad to know that the mayor has looked into this, and will do so, you know, going forward. And I really appreciate that.
Welcome, Susan.
So, thank you so much.
Susan, next time, let me know about the meeting, please.
I will. I'm so sorry, I didn't want to bother you, but yes.
You're never bothering me.
No, and I apologize that, Ms. Burns, you know.
No, it's not, no, it's no one's fault. I just, I was just disappointed, you know, because this is something that's very important.
Very important.
Yeah, very important.
And I'm so glad that you're reaching out to everyone and really looking into it. But again, I'm here to, you know, show the.
We're going to vet this fully.
Okay, great.
Okay? So we'll just keep in contact on this item.
All right, very good. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, can I say something?
Okay, yep. There's still a line, Frank.
Huh?
You want to wait till everybody's addressed the topic, or?
Sure, well, you just let me know when next resident.
I'll let you know, you're next.
Hi, Dana Aliaga. I reside at 4241 Northeast 22nd Terrace. I'm just here for you also, in support of Danielle. I'm a parent of two, soon to be three, students at Norcrest Elementary, and a teacher at Norcrest for the last 17 years. I apologize, mayor, that you weren't invited to the meeting, but I am going to ask you that. I am, you know, like I said, I've been at Norcrest for 17 years, and a lot of things have changed in 17 years. And unfortunately, one of those is the safety of our kids. You know, that they're a place where they're supposed to feel the safest, and now that's not the case so much. So I am here just to hope that you continue your conversation about school safety, and to meet with Pompano and explore some options that you can do to help keep our city's public school the safety side to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. He listens sometimes.
I'm Jenny Adams. I live at 2420 Northeast 46th Street. And I, I just prepared this, so I'm going to read what I wrote, but I do appreciate that you're going to monitor, but I would just like to share my thoughts. My children attend school with me in Parkland, where I teach in one of the elementary schools. They did attend Norcrest for a brief period, and at that time, I was under the impression that they had a dedicated SRO. I've since found out that Deputy Chisholm splits his time between three schools, which we've discussed. Having a dedicated SRO, and perhaps others that rotate through, is a necessity these days. Parkland Elementary Schools have had a dedicated SRO for years, and I can assure you that they come in handy in many different situations. They also educate our students about problems that they face in the community, at home or at school. To attract more families to Lighthouse Point, we should be looking to secure not our only public elementary school. Otherwise, families may move west, where the schools have added security and peace of mind with SROs. As we all know, seconds count when an intruder, or even worse, an active shooter is on campus. Lighthouse Point should help shoulder the cost alongside Pompano Beach, to ensure that we have an officer in place during school hours at Norcrest. And to carry it further, Norcrest really should have enough, at least one officer present from 7:30 a.m. until after class closes at 6:00 p.m., because students are still there till 6:00 p.m. As a Parkland teacher, I can assure you it is calming and reassuring for the faculty, for the students, and for the parents that come there, to see that there are safety SROs patrolling the campus and the halls. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and address this topic, or any other topic, for that matter?
Okay, Kyle first.
Yeah, let's, Commissioner Van Busker, looks like we've exhausted that topic. The floor is yours.
No, I just wanted to say something. I thought it was important, I believe, Ms. Adams, just that if the school resource officer, although 30 minutes before and 30 minutes after school is important, but it's also a long-term goal, also looking at, we do have students from the city, and also students that are there in their after-care program, which goes to 6 o'clock. So I definitely think that some of the pricing, I think, may be based, like the mayor was saying, from 30 minutes prior to starting, 30 minutes to ending the school, but may have not included that other portion where there's still kids on campus. So, you know, I just think that making sure that we monitor it very closely, and that we don't miss the boat. There were some statistics, numbers that were passed around at the last county, Broward County Task Force, School Safety Council, and basically, that there was a discussion on whether they could even have enough police officers in place, due to the fact of how many vacancies that are still required to be filled, if they actually had an SRO to have on campus, and the city, and the, in the county, which also included the charter schools. So I just want to make sure that we continually monitor, or at least on the forefront, and making sure that if need be, we have to raise our hand, we have to raise our.
Okay. And I'll just add on, on this topic real quick, and then we'll invite Mr. Benson. There was one more I saw who wanted to address the commission. I attended a couple of the PTA meetings where safety was addressed at Norcrest, and I was, I've seen some concerns at that school, and I know some are being addressed, but not all are being addressed to everybody's satisfaction. And this school resource officer probably, after a single point of entry, might be the next, next most important thing. So I'm encouraged to hear that the mayor's committed, and I believe that, of course, because I know gun safety, gun violence is something that the mayor's been proactive about. And, but I think what this commission may have to face is, if, if, if this doesn't become a reality in the not-too-distant future, we might have to be asking ourselves some questions. So that's all I'll say on that. So thank you very much, everybody, for coming out tonight, bringing the issue to forefront. And I know the mayor will be monitoring it and talking with our friends in Pompano about the issue. So with that, Mr. Benson, do you want to address the commission?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Commissioner Johnson.
About the same, about the same subject, before we go on.
Sure.
Our kids in Lighthouse Point go on from Norcrest to other schools. Where does it stand for the other schools? I mean, they go on to Deerfield Middle, Deerfield High School, and it's not just Norcrest. Pompano High, or Crystal Lake. I mean, they're.
I believe Pompano High has a full-time school resource officer. Deerfield High, I asked today a couple of parents, and they told me they have one, sometimes two, on campus. And then Deerfield Middle, I did not talk to anybody about that. That's what I was planning on talking to Ms. Rupert about today, but I wanted to get her summary on all the schools in this district.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Leo Benson, 3000 Northeast 31st Avenue, Lighthouse Point. Trying to stuff my neck out a little bit on this one. Maybe Frank.
Just this one?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but based upon your prior discussions, it appears that a $20,000, I mean, a $20 million bond issue may ultimately be needed. Amortizing that over 20 years at a 4% interest rate, I have estimated that it would cost Lighthouse Point taxpayers an extra $1,455,000 a year for principal and interest payments. Our proposed add valorem tax amount for this year, 2017 and '18, as shown in our budget detail, is $7,715,000. Add to that $1,455,000, a year of principal and interest on the bond, and you arrive at a total of $9,170,000 as the total add valorem tax needed perhaps in 2018 and '19, depending upon when the bond is issued. Dividing that $9,170,000 by the $1,455,000, I estimate that we residents should expect a 15.9% increase in the Lighthouse Point portion of our annual tax bill. This increase will be reduced to about 10% in three or four years, when our existing bond issue is paid off, and we no longer have that $407,000 in annual payments. That number might not be quite right. But we need a lot of support from our residents on this new bond. So I would suggest a new 50-member citizens committee to help you make the best use of these bonds funds, and to help with ideas to improve our city, as we did 18 years ago. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Chris Thompson. I'm a police officer with the city. I can give you the address, I feel like I live here. I'm also a PBA representative. I just wanted to touch on what these, these women have brought up, the topic with the SROs. That definitely hits home. My wife is a third grade teacher. She teaches at Croix Park in Fort Lauderdale. She taught for three years at Pompano Beach Elementary. So I share your concerns, and I really hope the county pulls through with the funding. I really believe they will, and the state's on their job. I hope it trickles into more locations. I have no doubt that the city will, will monitor it and do the best that they can to address that issue. From my personal knowledge, I do know that there's a deputy that lives on campus there. There's a residential program where they, they have a trailer where they live. He's not the SRO, but he does spend a significant amount of time there. So on his day off, he would be, but it's not a full reason. On another note, on April 16th, PBA Labor Attorney Michael Braverman emailed the city labor attorney requesting a meeting to negotiate. To my knowledge, the city has yet to provide a meeting date. I just want to reiterate that the PBA is ready and willing to negotiate. Two years is too long for this issue with the pension to go unresolved. A lot can be accomplished in two years. In fact, I would like to share a frame of reference to demonstrate exactly what can be achieved in less than two years. All of the following historical events were accomplished in less than two years. The drafting of the U.S. Constitution. The Constitutional Convention convened May 25th, 1787, and adjourned 116 days later on September 17th, 1787. The Empire State Building. Construction began March 17th, 1930, and completed 145 days later, on May 1st, 1930. The D-Day Invasion, also known as Operation Overlord, the largest amphibious assault in mankind. General Eisenhower and General Montgomery began planning at the Trident Conference in May 1943. They conducted the operation known as the D-Day Invasion 391 days later, on June 6th, 1944. Two years is too long to let this go unresolved. The PBA is ready and willing to negotiate. Thank you.
Any other public requests or comments from the floor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll turn to communications from the commissioners, commissioners. Any?
Can I go? Commissioner Joffe?
Commissioner Van Busker, the floor is yours.
Why, thank you very much, sir. I just had a question during we were discussing the reports, and we were continually looking at it. We still have not started our dredging, but we have an indication of when that's going to be. I know that we, through the hurricane and everything that went on, we kind of kept pushing it back, and I have not seen when we're going to pick back up on dredging.
Our Public Works Director is approaching the podium to address your question, Commissioner Van Busker.
Yes. Commissioner Van Busker, we, we are intending to use the fine property at Exchange Park as a dredge spoils transfer site, and they've required a lease, which they forwarded last week, which has been under review with the city attorney. There are some questions still yet to be resolved, and I'll be trying to resolve them tomorrow with fine. So it's still in the works.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I could just get to the point, right? I just was wondering if we were going to get it back up and going. I know it's been a lot of work for you.
We're hoping this is going to happen, and we'll have things resolved in a couple of weeks.
Perfect, thank you. I also wanted to mention something that's kind of a little disturbing, more along the lines of what the folks were coming and talking about Norcrest. We have, we have a teacher in our city, very active, in our city that works at Norcrest, that is unfortunately nearing the term of her extended contract with the Broward County School Board. And I want to bring this up, because I find it very disturbing a little bit, the fact that I've been calling, or like maybe, I know I've spoken to Nora Rupert, but I also was talking, trying to talk to Mr. Runse or Ms. Wanda, who is the head of the school board for appropriations of the teachers, is that we are, they're letting approximately at least as far as I know, 10 teachers due to the extended period of time for retirement go as a vehicle purchase for this week, or coming week. And they're not renewing their, basically not renewing their extensions to end of the year. And I was hoping that the commission would be willing to, or at least have a discussion with the fact of sending Mr. Runse an email or a letter stating how disappointed we are that we have a teacher who's been in our city that teaches at Norcrest Elementary for 16 years and does a great job of those kids. And I know a lot of parents of the four, and Christine, Mrs. Deluge, and that they have not contacted us, or got back to either myself, Nora, Mrs. Deluge, or some other folks that have called and emailed them to ask about letters. She can extend her time, at least in the two years. And I bring that up because it just goes to show you the inability currently of the leadership over there to actually get a hold of us, and at least reach out to us. I've been reaching out to them for over 10 days without one email back or a phone call.
Kyle, did you talk to Ms. Rupert about that, or did you just reach out to her and not get a return call?
No, I spoke to Ms. Rupert about that. I'm just actually, she says that the control of those extensions are, are with Mr. Runse and Dr. Wanda. And I just was disappointed, and I wanted to mention it, because here we are talking about school safety, and a simple answer on a question of basically making a teacher leave 30 days before the end of school, prior to the testing and so on and so forth, to bring in a sub for the next 30 days, when this teacher is very well and capable and wants to stay till at least finish out the rest of the year for students, we can't even get a phone call or an email back. And, you know, I bring that up, and I wasn't going to say anything, but as we discussed, the school resource officer, and making sure that the county's listening, or at least the school board's listening to us, I know Nora does a very good job of getting back to us, Ms. Rupert does. But in the end, we still need to hear from the person that's in charge. And I understand that he's a busy person, and I understand they got a lot going on, but these are very, a curse of phone calls. And I just feel that, you know, a valid discussion, not only on school resource officer, but at least something that we could send over there to Mr. Runse about the fact that, hey, listen, we're asking questions, we want to continuously support Norcrest Elementary as our home public school, but if you can't figure some easy things out where our parents want to go there, then we're going to, we're not going to want to participate if you're not even willing to at least have a discussion on extending a teacher out that you already explained to her, basically she was told that she gets paid at the end of the year, and now they're telling her two weeks out, they send her a quick email saying, oh, by the way, you're going to have to leave on a Thursday, but we're sending this extension. So, I mean, you know, it just blows my mind.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to address that, too. It's the first I've heard of this, and I don't know what power we have as the commission, but it's absolutely ludicrous to think that they would take a teacher out of the classroom for the last month of school and put a substitute in. It just doesn't make any sense at all, so.
And what's the press office say?
Yeah, I don't think we could physically do anything, Commissioner Johnson, but what I would like for us to do is just say, can we have Mike's draft letter to say, listen, we don't-
Any other public requests or comments from the floor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll turn to communications from the commissioners, commissioners. Any?
Can I go? Commissioner Goffey?
Commissioner Van Busker, the floor is yours.
Why, thank you very much, sir. I just had a question during we were discussing the report, and we're continually looking at it, we still have not started our dredging, but we have an indication of when that's gonna be. I know that we, through the hurricane and everything that went on, we kinda kept pushing it back, and I have not seen when we're gonna pick back up on dredging.
Our Public Works Director is approaching the podium to address your question, Commissioner Van Busker.
Yes, Commissioner Van Busker, we are intending to use the fine property at Exchange Park as a dredge spoils transfer site, and they've required a lease, which they forwarded last week, which has been under review with the city attorney. There are some questions still yet to be resolved, and I'll be trying to resolve them tomorrow with fine. So it's still in the works.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I could just get to the point, right? I just was wondering if we were gonna get it back up and going. I know it's been a lot of work for you.
We're hoping this is gonna happen, and we'll have things resolved in a couple of weeks.
Perfect, thank you. I also wanted to mention something that's kinda a little disturbing, more along the lines of what the folks were coming and talking about Norcrest. We have, we have a teacher in our city, very active, in our city that works at Norcrest, that is unfortunately nearing the term of her extended contract with the Broward County School Board. And I wanna bring this up because I find it very disturbing a little bit, the fact that I've been calling, or like maybe, I know I've spoken to Ms. Rupert, but I also was trying to talk to Mr. Runse or Ms. Wanda, who is the head of the school board for reappropriation of the teachers, is that we are, they're letting approximately at least as far as I know, 10 teachers due to the extended period of time for retirement go as of April 3rd of this week, or coming week. And they're not renewing their, basically not renewing their extensions to the end of the year. And I was hoping that the commission would be willing to, or at least have, a discussion with the fact of sending Mr. Runse an email or a letter stating how disappointed we are that we have a teacher who's been in our city that teaches at Norcrest Elementary for 16 years and does a great job with those kids, and I know a lot of parents look forward to going and seeing Mrs. Delus, and that they have not contacted us or called back to either myself, or Mrs. Delus, or some other folks that have called, emailed them to ask about letters. She can extend her time, at least in the school year. And I bring that up because it just goes to show you the inability currently of the leadership over there to actually get a hold of us and at least reach out to us. I've been reaching out to them for over 10 days without one email back or phone call.
Kyle, did you talk to Ms. Rupert about that, or did you just reach out to her and not get a return call?
No, I spoke to Ms. Rupert about that. I'm just actually, she says that the control of those extensions are aligned with Mr. Runse and Dr. Wanda. And I just was disappointed, and I wanted to mention it, because here we are talking about school safety and a simple answer on a question of basically making a teacher leave 30 days before the end of school, prior to the testing and so on and so forth, to bring in a sub for the next 30 days, when this teacher is very well and capable and wants to stay till at least finish out the rest of the year for her student, we can't even get a phone call or an email back. And, you know, I bring that up, and I wasn't gonna say anything, but as we discuss the school resource officer and making sure that the county's listening, or at least the school board's listening to us, I know Nora does a very good job of getting back to us, Ms. Rupert does, but in the end, we still need to hear from the person that's in charge. And I understand that he's a busy person, and I understand they got a lot going on, but these are very accursed phone calls, and I just feel that, you know, a valid discussion, not only on school resource officer, but at least something that we could send over there to Mr. Runse about the fact that, hey, listen, we're asking questions, we wanna continuously support Norcrest Elementary as our own public school, but if you can't figure some easy things out where our parents wanna go there, then we're gonna, we're not gonna wanna participate if you're not even willing to at least have a discussion on extending a teacher out that you already explained to her, basically she was told that she gets paid at the end of the year, and now they're telling her two weeks out, they sent her a quick email saying, oh, by the way, you're gonna have to leave on the 3rd, but we're sending this extension. So, I mean, yeah, it just blows my mind.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to address that, too. It's the first I've heard of this, and I don't know what power we have as a commission, but it's absolutely ludicrous to think that they would take a teacher out of the classroom for the last month of school and put a substitute in. It just doesn't make any sense at all, so.
And what's the press office say?
Yeah, I don't think we could physically do anything, Commissioner Johnson, but what I would like for us to do is just say, can we have Mike's draft a letter to state, listen, we are, we are trying to, we wanna support all of our public schools that our kids are falling into, and we need to hear feedback. And the fact that you're taking a teacher out that wants to stay, that's begging to say that you told couldn't stay, and telling her she has to leave within two weeks, that's ridiculous. 30 days before school, before school ends. If this is about the kids, it's not about the teacher, it's not about them, it's just, they've already given her the extension, and now they're rescinding it, it seems ridiculous. And that's all I'm asking for, is just a brief letter that can be sent there, giving what the commission feels. I mean, that's what I'm asking for.
So it's the policy of, it's the, it's the, I have no problem addressing expression or request for discussion or explanation about the policy of Commissioner Johnson's point about having a teacher pulled out 30 days before, but, I mean, beyond that, I kind of agree with Commissioner Johnson as well, I think our hands are kinda tied, unfortunately, but, I mean, that's, that makes no sense.
I mean, we can certainly reach out to his office and see what he has to say, but, I mean, obviously, he's not returning phone calls, but maybe there's another person we can get to that may do something. I mean, I'll leave that up to the commission, what they wanna do. I'm happy to sign a letter, to that effect.
And I personally appreciate that all the commissioners and the mayor listening to this, that just, you know, I feel very passionate about the fact that we're, you know, they told her she could stay and now they're removing her, and without an explanation. I understand that there's things that have to be done, but no explanation, no communication is disappointing, as far as I'm concerned. So that's all, I'll leave the rest in what you guys feel is necessary, and that's the way to accomplish our goal here.
Commissioner.
Kyle, do you know if this is system-wide that they're doing this, or is it just that Karen was in this particular group?
I, the floor, I called Patricia Goode and also I spoke to Ms. Rupert, and they said that they've had multiple people who had this extension that were supposed to be Karen's teachers that they needed to retain because they don't have enough teachers till the end of the year, and they basically just sent a bunch of emails out going, hey, by the way, we're not gonna utilize your, extend your extension until at least the first of the, or the end of the school year, and you have to leave it. So there's other teachers, but obviously, knowing Mrs. Delus and how she does, you know, being a resident of our city and also my kids have all had her as a kindergarten teacher, I have direct knowledge of what's going on with her.
I mean, I think the big question that you have, that we have in control, is how come we're not getting responses back from, you know, either our commissioners, or mayor, or anybody in the city administration, if they're not responding to.
I haven't reached out to anybody, this is the first I've heard about it as well, so.
To me, that's a concern, whether you can get into personnel matters, I think that's, you know, kind of slippery slope, even getting in that, but understanding, I think it'd be nice to know, this is especially throughout the district, why the city, or, excuse me, why the county would go to a point of, you know, doing this when you start moving into testing at the end of the year.
Six weeks to go in the year.
Yeah, which is a key time, and, you know, to me, just, that's a concern from a city perspective, you know, or quality of public schools.
Plus, they have a huge shortage of substitutes as it is, so.
Earl, maybe there's an article for Sunday.
Too late. It's 2 o'clock today.
Could a deadline be a little earlier, you, right?
Could be.
Does anybody have any thoughts on how to?
I mean, I'd like to address this, have the mayor try and reach out, because if he has at least some sort of relationship, to get some answers.
I've got a few at the school.
On behalf of the.
See what I can do.
The administration.
Administration, see if I can get a return phone call.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be some, well, I'd like to say some legitimate reason, but that's probably not right.
Unfortunately, Ms. Rupert has pneumonia, like I said earlier, so she has not been able to talk to me. Her office was very apologetic late this afternoon when they called me back.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, you know, that's, I just, I do appreciate you guys all listening and taking the time for that, so thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing.
Commissioner Mocker?
Yeah, we're all up here talking about how frustrating it is if somebody can't get a return phone call.
Who's not calling you back?
Or a letter. Well, Chris Thompson says PBA isn't getting a phone call back or a letter, and I'd like to know why. I mean, I know it's complicated, it's difficult, but if they are writing and saying they wanna meet, are we not returning phone calls, if they're not writing back?
Well, since it was addressed to Crossland, I guess Mr. Crossland has that answer, and we'll have to ask him tomorrow.
I think we need to ask that question, because I think it's very frustrating. I know there's a lot of complications, a lot of reasons, things don't get done, that's fine, but we're all frustrated because we can't get the school board. I think they would be frustrated, they can't get a labor attorney to get a letter back at least acknowledging, you know, what the delay is or what the circumstances are. I think they deserve a response. Is that simple? And that's a legitimate question.
I think it's a simple email back, but that's fine.
Okay.
We'll follow up with it.
All right. That's all I have.
I've got it on my to-do list.
All right.
Commissioners, anything else? Mayor?
I just have one other thing. It is our last meeting in April, and, well, first of all, thank Becky for the great job at Park. Great event, all public works, everyone was involved in that and really made a big difference, so let me say that first. And then the second thing is, this is our last meeting in April. Traditionally, starting May 1, we go to our summer attire, so if it's the will of the commission, I'd like to recommend that, starting with our next meeting, we will go to summer attire.
Not a moment too soon.
I say Earl, jump on in, hard to you. Earl's running out of seats, I think.
Ties.
Ties.
You know, I forgot, I wanted to say one thing. Unfortunately, because I was on death's door for a few weeks here, I wasn't able to attend, but I wanted to thank Paul for what I hear was an absolutely smashing tip of top event again, and thank you so much for doing that and caring every year.
I do.
You're the best.
And I have one other thing. Torch Run is tomorrow, so be careful out on Federal Highway. I guess they'll be up here, what, around 12:30, I saw. Okay, so that starts down further south and works its way up this way, so if you're out and about, try and watch out on Federal Highway on the northbound side.
Okay. I believe we are adjourned.
Take your child.
I'm sorry? We said second, second meeting in there.